I would like to begin by taking a moment of silence to remember former deputy chief Paul T. Nolan of the Milton Police Department. In addition to serving on the police department, he was also an attorney and former president of the Norfolk County Prosecutors Association, a member of the Knights of Columbus and, of course, the Massachusetts Bar Association. So if everyone would please join me in this moment of silence. Thank you. We wish his family and friends solace and extend our sympathies and also thank him for his service. May he rest in peace. Now, if everyone would please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
Pledge allegiance to the
to the
United States of America and to the Republic
for which it stands.
One nation under God indivisible with liberty justice for all.
Thank you. We have public comment now and I will just explain how we conduct public comment. For those of you who wish to make a comment, if you could raise your hand, if you're on the phone, you can press *9 to raise your hand and then *6 to toggle on and off for mute. And I just would like to remind people that civility is very important and we refrain from personal attacks and interrupting people while they're speaking. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Thank you. This evening, we are down a member. Richard Wells is unable to make it today due to some difficulty with a medical issue. So we wish him a speedy recovery. And our first item is the appointment of the Equity and Justice for All Advisory Committee. And I would like to turn this over to Mike Zullos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe it was two weeks ago or three weeks ago perhaps that the Board delegated to me the charge of coming up with a slate of 13 individuals to fill the committee. And the effort here has been to come up with a varied slate of individuals with varied and relevant experience and the talent and the skills that we hope can best address the issues that we'd like this committee to look into. The slate of individuals that I'm about to describe to you has professional experience in business, in law, in academia, in nonprofits, in law enforcement, in affordable housing, in social work and human services and in the ministry, among others. Their personal experiences range from those who have lived in Milton for many, many years to those who are relatively new to Milton, those who have grown children and those who have very young children. And so we've tried to present a group that has that varied and relevant experience to review the issues of race and racism and oppression and to look at our town policies and procedures and budgets in light of those things. And so what I'd like to do is describe the 13 individuals pardon me, describe the 13 individuals all at once because I do believe that their experience and skills are complementary and then the Board can decide to take up the discussion and vote how it wishes. So if that's acceptable, I will just describe the 13 individuals, three of whom have already been appointed, but I think the skills and talents and experience of these individuals are complementary to the charge of this committee. If that's acceptable, I'll go through, Madam Chair, and describe the 13 people on the slate.
I think I saw head nodding. So yes, please, you're going.
All right. First is Patricia Latimore. And Pat is proposed as a co-chair of this committee. Pat Latimore retired in December 2019 as the Chief Operating Officer of the United Way of Massachusetts, which funds $30 million annually to nonprofits in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. Prior to the United Way, Pat had over 20 years of experience in senior roles in finance and operations and technology in companies such as State Street Corporation, Picturetell, Prime Computer and Polaroid. Pat is a member of the Citizens for Diverse Milton and a Board Member of Celebrate Milton. She has a Bachelor of Arts degree from Harvard University and an MBA from Columbia University. And again, Pat is proposed as a co-chair of the committee. Second, Lamar Reddicks. And Lamar is proposed as the other co-chair of the committee. Lamar has a degree from Bentley College. He is and has been for the past nine years the Athletic Director and Head Basketball Coach at Milton Academy. His responsibilities include establishing budget development plans, overseeing all aspects of the athletic programming and staff at Milton Academy. In addition to those roles, he also is a Director of the Town of Milton Lamar Reddicks Summer Basketball Camp and has been since 2000. In those roles, he maintains safety and well-being of campers from grades three to eight. He plans and implements skill stations and hires and coordinates camp counselors. Mr. Reddicks is an inductee of the Milton High School Athletic Hall of Fame. He received a proclamation of community service from the mayor of Waltham. He was a male athlete of the year at Bentley College and captain of the varsity basketball team. He has several other honors throughout his athletic career, which preceded his professional career. He has been a member of the Black Coaches Association and now the Achieving which is now called the Achieving Coaching Excellence since 2013. And as I mentioned, Mr. Reddicks is a graduate of Bentley College in Waltham. And he is proposed as a co-chair. Linda Champion is proposed as an alternate. Linda Champion graduated from Suffolk Law in 2001 and has spent the past 19 years working in the areas of labor, industrial accidents, consumer protection, real estate and business transactions, practicing both in state and federal systems. Linda was a Democratic primary candidate for Suffolk County District Attorney in 2018. Linda is a former Suffolk County Assistant District Attorney. She currently represents the Commonwealth Workers' Compensation Trust Fund as an Assistant General Counsel at the Department of Industrial Accidents. Linda is a graduate of Emerge Massachusetts 2020 class and was devoted to serve as the 2020 class representative. She serves as an advisor to the President of Whittier Street Health Center, a member of the OKTA Korean Trade Association and a Board Member of Q Realty, a wholly owned subsidiary of Urban Edge. Linda spends a great deal of time working with community residents in the area of affordable housing and development and teaches first-time homebuyer programs for the city of Boston, Urban Edge and the QCAP. Linda is the proud mother of Taylor, a 2019 Milton High School graduate. And she is proposed as an alternate. Mark Conrad is a co-founder and CEO of Westcon Personal Protection, a security firm that has been in business for close to 20 years and is a company that is valued at close to $4 million. His prior professional experience includes a tenure as Vice President of External Affairs and Executive Vice President and the Director of the Bridge Partnership Program at Bridgewater State University, during which he provided hundreds opportunities for hundreds of socio-economically disadvantaged public school youth to someday realize their dreams of attending college in the future. Prior to that, Mark served as Chairman of the Massachusetts Parole Board as an appointee of Governor Patrick. Mark is a 24-year police veteran. He served in Milton and was the first African-American hired for the town of Winthrop and on the force at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. In addition to routine law enforcement duties, Mark was on the Motorcycle Patrol Unit, the Metro Special Weapons and Tactics and served as the Dare Liaison. Mark's expertise in educational enforcement have resulted in many invitations to serve on boards and at conferences. He served as co-chair of the 2011 National Urban League Youth Summit Conference and on the boards of the Boston Central Elderly Services, the Correctional Association of Massachusetts, the George Louis Ruffin Society and the Diakonate Board of Morningstar Baptist Church. Mark was an adjunct professor of criminal justice at Boston University and has guest lectured at the Harvard University School of Law, the University of Massachusetts, Boston and Suffolk University. He has also served as a keynote speaker for the Correctional Association of Massachusetts, the African-American Association at Bridgewater State University, Bunker Hill Community College, among others. Mark earned his Master of Arts degree in criminal justice from Boston University, a Bachelor of Arts degree in criminal justice from Curry College here in Milton and a Bachelor's degree from Norfolk State University. Mark has, I believe, a somewhat unique experience of being not only a resident of Milton, raising his family in Milton, but also being a town employee part of the time, a town employee as a member of the police department, part of the time he's been raising his family here. The next member is Frank L. Davis III. Frank is a commercial lending bank executive and has been for more than 25 years. He is currently Vice President of Commercial Lending at Mansfield Bank in Mansfield. And he has been a resident of Milton for, I believe, more than 30 years. In addition to his background in banking, Mark, Frank rather, has served as a member and the first Vice President, Executive Committee Member and the Board of Directors of the Ellis Memorial and Eldridge House, Inc., a not-for-profit settlement house that provides childcare and elder care services. He has served at BID Milton Hospital as a member of the Board of Overseers, Board of Directors and corporate member. He has served as a member of the Board of Directors and corporate member of the Boston Local Development Corporation. He has served as a member of the Board of Directors of Youth Build USA and Chairman and member of the Board of Directors of Road to Responsibility, Road to Responsibility, Inc. Here in Milton, Frank has served the community in several capacities. He has been for six years and is currently a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Committee. He was a warrant committee member. He was a town meeting member for many years. He was a member of the Library Building Committee back about 10 years ago when the library was renovated. And he served on the search committee for the town administrator, I believe, our current town administrator. And Frank is, again, he's been, he's lived in Milton for, I believe, close to 30 years. He is a graduate of Dartmouth College and received his MBA from Babson College. Karen Gross-Horn, who has already been voted as a member of this committee, provides a varied experience and directly relevant skills for this committee. She has experience in nonprofits currently with the United Way for eight years. She is one of the founders, the Chief Financial Officer and Program Officer of Courageous Conversations towards racial justice in Milton and Mattapan. And she has experience in education for five years. She was part of that time. She served in the Milton Public Schools as a special ed instructional team ABA therapist. And in addition to her nonprofit and her education experience, she also has corporate experience working for John Hancock and Kraft Foods. She has experience in higher education having worked at Framingham State College and State University of New York at Oswego. And Karen also has an extensive educational background. Her degree is from State University of New York at Oswego, Harvard Extension School, Boston University, New England Center for Children and several other groups. And so Karen has already been appointed to this committee as the Representative of Courageous Conversations. Aldo Guerrero is a first-generation American citizen. Aldo is currently the Director of Risk Management for UniFirst Corporation. Aldo came to this country at the age of four by swimming the Rio Grande with his family. He grew up in Little Havana and was naturalized as a citizen in 2006. Aldo has two children, ages, I believe, four and six. He has been in Milton for approximately four years. Prior to UniFirst, he has had roles in several other large corporations. He was in risk management for Phillips North America, for Liberty Construction and other firms as well. Aldo's degree is from the Florida International University. He has also been recognized as a 40 Under 40 the 2013 40 Under 40 for the Worcester Business Journal and South Shore Star's recipient. He was a member of the Suffolk Liberty Inaugural Diversity and Inclusion Council. And so that is Aldo Guerrero. Next is Chris Hart. Chris Hart is a litigation partner at Foley Hoag in Boston. He was recently former co-chair of the Boston Bar Association's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Section. Chris has been deeply involved in the issues of racial justice in the greater Boston area. He's served on his firm's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. He recently agreed to join the Board of YW Boston, which is a leader in the Boston area for inclusion with a focus on empowering women of color. Chris has also served and is an advisory board member of the Trustees of Reservation and served on their diversity task force. And he is an active alumnus of Partnership, Inc., a Boston-based professional development organization for professionals of color. Chris is a, just most recently, left the warrant committee and is currently a town meeting member here in Milton. Chris grew up in San Diego in a family of Mexican immigrants. In fact, Spanish is his first language. And he has four children and that includes one child at Pierce and one at the Discovery Schoolhouse. Next is, I'm just going to take a sip of caffeine. Pardon me. Next is Dr. Janelle Lucas. Dr. Janelle Lucas is a professor emerita of human services and social work from Leslie University, a licensed independent clinical social worker. Janelle holds undergraduate degrees from UMass Amherst in sociology and master's and doctorate degrees in social work from the Simmons University School of Social Work. She has been an educator and clinical social worker for over 30 years, teaching and publishing in the areas of racism, ethnicity and multiculturalism. Throughout her career, Dr. Lucas has been a member or co-chair of multiple committees focused on social justice and equity, such as Leslie University's President's Committee for Inclusive Excellence as well as its Executive Steering Committee, the Task Force for Social Justice in Teaching and Learning and co-chair of the National Association of Social Works Committee on Ethnic and Racial Affairs. As a social worker, her practice has focused on serving those who have been disenfranchised by multiple systems and oppressions. While as an educator, she has used these experiences as a foundation to equip students with knowledge, values and skills of the profession critical to working with those whose voices and experience are often discounted. In and out of the classroom, one of her primary goals has been to advocate for and to effect change. She has been a resident of Milton for over 28 years. And she is, in addition to her teaching and academic background, as part of it, she has an extensive library of publications and presentations, some of which are directly on point to the subject matter here. Keith McDermott is a longtime Milton resident who brings years of experience as an administrator and in leadership positions in community and government relations. He is currently the regional sales manager for Kiefer Northeast, which is a sports surface company. Prior to joining Kiefer Northeast, Keith served as the Director of the Reggie Lewis Track and Athletics Center, where he was instrumental in positioning the center and engaging the local community, business and political leaders that led to the center being recognized as the premier athletic facility in the country during his tenure as Director of the center. The center staff was one of the most diverse staff and regarding, one of the most diverse staff. And during that period, Keith was able to attract various track and non-track events to the center, such as various USA Track and Field and NCAA events and various other high-profile events. Before serving at the Reginald Loue Center, Keith served as Director of Community Relations at Northeastern University. Pardon me. And he has also served on the transition teams of Massachusetts Governor Charlie Baker and Boston's mayor Walsh. He has served or is currently serving in the boards and committees such as Metco, Inc., Beaver Country Day School Board of Directors, Yaki Club of Roxbury Advisory Board, Children Advocacy Center and Madison Park Development Corporation Board of Directors. He was also appointed by three different governors to the Massachusetts Governors Committee on Physical Fitness and Sports. Keith, a longtime Milton resident since the early 1990s and have three children who are graduates of the Milton Public School system. Keith's degrees are from Springfield College and he has a master's degree from Syracuse University. Okay, three more to go. Quincy Miller is proposed as an alternate. Quincy Miller is President and Vice Chair of Eastern Bank with over $13 billion in assets and over 100 banking and insurance locations serving communities in eastern Massachusetts, southern and coastal New Hampshire and Rhode Island. He spends his time focused on helping lead the overall strategic direction of Eastern, which has served its customers, colleagues and communities for over 200 years. Quincy is the former President of Citizens Bank Massachusetts and was President of its business banking division. Quincy is committed to supporting the communities where he lives and works and he focuses on youth and equity. He serves on the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club of Boston, Blue Cross Blue Shield Massachusetts, The Bottom Line, the Alliance for Business Leadership, NACD New England, the Greater Boston YMCA Board of Overseers, Board Emeritus of the Greater Boston Food Bank and the Urban League of Massachusetts. And he is a founding member of the New Commonwealth Racial Equity and Social Justice Fund. Quincy has been recognized in the community as an inaugural member of the GK100 "Most Influential People of Color" in Boston," by Get Connected." He's been also recognized by the Boston Business Journal's 40 Under 40. And in 2020, Quincy was honored at the Martin Luther King Junior Memorial Breakfast with the MLK 50th Anniversary Award for his commitment to diversity and inclusion that expresses Dr. King's commitment to justice and equity. Quincy is a graduate of Lafayette College, where he earned a BA in economics and business and of the Consumer Bankers Association's Graduate School of Retail Bank Management. And Quincy lives in Milton with his two children. Again, he is proposed as an alternate. Renisha Silver. Renisha Silver is a 15-year sworn veteran of the Boston Police Department. She has been a detective since 2015 and proudly serves the Roxbury community, which is Area B 2. Renisha is a Tucker mom with a rising first grader and a pre-kindergartner. And she has volunteered in addition to her professional and personal demands. She has volunteered at a nonprofit bereavement camp for children since 2011. These efforts are deeply personal to Renisha because of her two young children and she would like to see them grow up in a place where they're not perceived as a threat solely because of the color of their skin. And she wants to be part of making positive changes for the community at large. And that is Renisha Silver. And finally, Reverend Lisa Ward, who has already been appointed by this committee as the Representative of the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association. But I will just recount her background just so we can fill out the members here. Reverend Lisa Ward is entering her fifth year serving as Minister of First Parish in Milton, Unitarian Universalist. She is a member of the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association and she is the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association Liaison for Citizens for Diverse Milton. In her 28 years of ministry, Lisa has been a social activist for racial justice, LGBTQ civil rights and domestic violence awareness. Justice is a calling for Reverend Lisa. She is ever ready to learn, explore and advocate for deeper and wider systemic change that can usher in transformed, truly equitable society. She, Lisa, says that it starts in the heart and expands interdependently through the fabric of society. And so those are the 13 members, two co-chairs and two alternates on the slate.
Well, I am sure that I speak for the board when we say, "Thank you." I say, "Thank you" for the tremendous effort that you've put into this and not only shaping the vision of what could be, but also helping it come to fruition through the countless conversations you've had and the networking you've done.
If I may, Madam Chair, just to add one thing and I would be remiss if I didn't point out all the people who have been interested in serving on this committee and participating in this committee and all the people who have expressed the desire to help out even if they're not voting members of the committee. So for all of those who have expressed an interest in serving on this committee, it certainly doesn't end here. I'm sure the committee will be reaching I'm sure the committee will be reaching out, and they'll have all your names. And I'm sure they'll be seeking your input. So I want to thank everyone who expressed an interest and reached out and, and who gave us their time to speak and to write in, 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 in the, in the effort to put this together. I really want to thank everyone who, who, who reached out to us to, to serve on this committee. So, sorry, I'm talking.
No, 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 you're not talking too much. And that's absolutely, absolutely right. There were a lot of people who, just too, too many to choose from, and that, that they'll have an opportunity to contribute. Would other members like to say anything before we entertain a motion?
I'd just like to echo your comments and ask whether or not we can accept Mike's appointment as the motion. And, there.
I, I believe that that's, we can, we can do that. We just need a second.
If that's a motion, then I'll second the motion to nominate those individuals to the committee.
Is there any further discussion?
I too would just like to thank Mike Zulus for all of his efforts. I know this was a lot of work to contact a group of very qualified candidates. I think we were up around 45 or 50 people at one point who had expressed an interest. So, a thank you to Mike for all of your work, and thank you again to all the applicants. There are several members of this committee that, whom I do not know, but the backgrounds are quite impressive and very diverse, and we have a lot of good expertise represented. I'm delighted to see Frank Davis on the committee. He's one that I know best among this group, having served on the board at the hospital with Frank and many years ago. And in all of the members of this committee, Karen, Lisa, the others that I know on the committee. But this is quite a good group, Mike, so thank you for all of your efforts. And I'm looking forward to seeing what this group puts together and what they come back to us with.
Thank you. I think we're very fortunate that so many people stepped forward and are interested in doing this work that requires so much care and insight and, and will be of great value. All those in favor? I'm going to do something a little differently and start with Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Collins, yes.
Madam Chair, can I just ask a question? I think administratively, it might make sense to ask Mike Zulus to at least have some initial contact with the group. Oftentimes, for purposes of the first meeting, a member of the board might attend just to get the committee off to a good start and see if there's anything that might be needed or any, any information clarifying the charge, anything like that. So I think it makes sense. Where Mike has been talking to all of the new committee members to be the one to continue that dialogue in case they should have any questions or need anything additional.
There's a meeting set up for tomorrow he can tell you about. I think it's tomorrow. Is that correct?
Well, yes, it was subject, yeah, subject to the vote tonight. The, the co-chairs, Pat Lattimore and Lamar Reddicks, we, we, we set up a call. Again, subject to the vote tonight, we set up a call just to go over mechanics with, with, with Mike Dennehy and with Hillary, Hillary Waite and Melinda, if she can make it, just to go over mechanics. And then I, I know the, I know that Pat and Lamar are eager to get started. And I think it, my thought was similar to yours, Katie, that for the first meeting, you know, I don't know, they'll, they'll, they'll get sworn in either at the meeting or, or, you know, at some other time. But, excuse me, I'm, I'm happy to, to do that, to go to the first meeting. But I think, I think it's appropriate for the chair to be there as well, if she can make it, so. So anyway, so that, so I, I appreciate that. I think it makes sense. And that'll, you know, subject to everyone's schedules and what Pat and Lamar think, you know, that, that may happen as soon as next week. But we are going to have a call tomorrow to go over mechanics and, and just open meeting law and posting agendas and, and things like that.
I, I had assumed that I would attend the first meeting, just, well, out of, out of courtesy and gratitude. So, thank you. Okay. It's hard to move on from this because it's momentous. But thank, thank you, everyone, and, and thank you again to, to our, our new advisory committee members. So we'll move on to item four. And we have a guest joining us, Dr. Vias. And the item is a town-owned parcel that abuts 145 and 167 Lyman Road. Hello, good evening, doctor.
Thank you, thank you, and nice to meet everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of the board. And again, my apologies for missing the August 12th meeting.
No, that's certainly quite, quite all right. And just by way of background, we received a letter from Dr. Vias expressing interest in purchasing this piece of town-owned property that, that abuts his home. So I believe you have a presentation for us. I saw.
I have a few slides that, thank you, Hillary, I appreciate it. I thought I'd put together a few slides just to, to kind of go through it. First of all, just maybe as a, as a part of introduction, my wife and I, Tammy, have been living in Milton since 1998. We've lived here at 167 Lyman Road. Since that time, my wife was a teacher at Tucker for two years. I'm, I'm an infectious disease physician, and I've had practices both at Mass General Hospital and spent some of my professional time also at Milton Hospital as well. And so we're, we're very proud members of this, of this town. Hillary, next slide. What I thought I would do, since I had the opportunity to review the, the, the discussion that took place at the August 12th meeting, and I thought what I'd probably do is just give you a little bit of a background in terms of some of the rationale and what, what I'm, what we are, what Tammy and I are hoping to try to accomplish. I took this image straight off Google Maps. This is, the property in question is at the corner of Lyman and Spruce. It's actually the, supposed to be the offshoot of Spruce, where, you know, at a time when the, this, the town had planned to put a street into the town dump. I took this shot in a way to show the proximity to the property. There's a little blue sign that is hovering over my house. And then there, the property that is in question is, is to the left of that, which would be if you just drew a line from Spruce and intersected Lyman and headed towards, what you can see on the bottom of that slide is the golf course. The property in question is really just going to be, and if you, Hillary, if you can go to the next slide, what I did was just kind of show a, a blow up of the picture that we were just looking at the past. Here, you're starting to get an appreciation of where the fence line is for my neighbor in, in, in white. And then you can also see kind of the extent of my backyard. Even though this property does go all the way, I think it goes all the way back, we're really only interested in the property that would be essentially at the back property line for both of our properties here. So it's a smaller piece of land. Next slide. So I'm showing you now, if you're standing on Spruce and you're looking at this property, this is the property that I just wanted to share with you. The house on the left is Tammy and my property. And then Colin and Cindy Black lived to the right. And you can start to see on the right their white fence there. So this is approximately spanning about 28 feet. And then the big, thick, white arrow represents kind of my property line here. So it's not a very long piece of land. It's certainly not the size of a, a lot, and it certainly will not support a freestanding living structure for an independent house. Next slide. And so this is just another picture at a different time of the night. This is again our, my, my, Tammy and my house on the left. And then you can see the, the, that area. And then it's, it's, as you can start to see, it's, it's pretty heavily wooded at this time. Next slide. And then just, don't mind our dog there. But you can just see just on the side there of the, 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 the white picket fence is, what is, what I'm trying to show you there is a, is a path that'll, that some people will use to go out to the golf course. Although there are many spots on Lyman Road where you can access the golf course. That is one of those that you can access the golf course. Next slide. And if you were just standing at that property and looking down, this would be the, the picture that you would see just straight down Spruce Street. So you can see it's exactly kind of in that, in that direction. And Hillary, if I could have the final slide. So I, what I wanted to do with those slides was to show you the property and what we're, and then now we wanted to kind of share with you what we were thinking about doing that. Clearly, that's not a property that we're, we're interested in having put together a kind of a small garage. Our house that we have has a one-car garage that is attached to our house. I have two boys who are 22 and 18. And, and so the, our current garage is actually too small for what is needed for our, our folks at our home. And so what we were thinking about doing was putting something together like this. This clearly isn't, is just a picture that I took off the web and is not at all to intend to the select board. This is the actual property that, or the dwelling or the structure that we would put on that property. But it's meant to be just a representative of what we were thinking. It would be a detached structure. It would essentially kind of serve as a garage and allow for some additional storage for us to, to, to keep a few things in, in that, in that area. And we recognize that, that based on what I, from earlier conversations that I've had, that we would not be, this would all be considered kind of one property, our, our main property, and then this, this property, if we were able to acquire it and to build on it. So perhaps in the interest of time, I'll stop there and thank Hillary for sharing the slides here and certainly willing to entertain any questions or provide any clarifications about the nature of the property or what our plans might be.
Do members have any questions at the moment? Mr. Zulus?
Well, oh, did Arthur have something?
Go ahead, Mike.
I, I was just going to say, Dr. Vias, you mentioned your, thank you for that. That was very helpful. You mentioned your neighbors. Is it, is it your understanding that your neighbors are supportive of this? And, and maybe you could address that.
Sure, thanks for the question, Mike. I have had, the only conversation that I've had with the neighbor is the one that's directly adjacent to the property. That's Cindy and Colin Black. And they are, they're very supportive and have told us that they're willing to provide a letter of support. I just wasn't sure where, we're in the process that, to solicit that letter. I have not reached out to any of our other neighbors in terms of discussing that. And our, our goal was really to create that area. We do know that we have some of our neighbors who do like to, you know, during the fall, to kind of take their leaves and, and, and put it onto that property. And that's certainly something that we would want to support. Where this is not a matter, a matter of trying to create an exclusive part of this, but just to provide us with a structure, but then try to do our very best to maintain that path for everyone to continue to use the back part of that property, which is where most of those leaves and other kind of yard waste is oftentimes placed out there and continue to do that. We do know of about four or five neighbors, all of which we have great relationships with. And we'd be happy to solicit specific letters of support should we get to that stage of the, of the discussions.
And thank you, Dr. Vias. And just one follow-up to that end, is, would it be part of your proposal to provide an easement for the use of the back property? Just to make sure that that's, that that is, is not lost along the way?
Yeah, if, if the easement is meant to suggest that the people would have kind of rite of passage and be able to kind of do the things that they want to do. Again, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm just trying to, trying to go for my, what my definition of easement is, then that would certainly be, that would certainly be very feasible from, from my point of view. I don't, again, our goal here isn't to, to deprive any of our neighbors of any of the, of that area, but simply to be able to, to kind of use part of that or to, to, to be able to, be able to do this, create the structure that we think would be helpful to us, that would be aesthetically pleasing to the, to the community, but also allow for individuals who want to go back there for whatever reason, that they want to still be able to maintain that path.
Thank you.
Mr. Doyle, do you have a question?
Mike did a good job in asking the question that was on my mind. And the doctor did a good job in responding to it. The only two remaining questions, of course, would be beyond us. One is determining what the size of the, either width of the easement would be, and then the ability of the remaining property size relative to your plans. And check the town to see if it had any interest in whether or not that easement would be a public way versus a private easement. And then my last question was, if you and your wife had a timeline in mind.
We started these discussions with the town, I think, around January or so. But obviously, you know, during this onset of the pandemic, all things kind of, kind of took a backseat. And there were some changes in the planning department. So the, the short answer to that, Arthur, is that we, you know, would love to kind of see this move along. But obviously, from our point of view, there isn't any, there's nothing specifically that I'm working towards, you know. And, and I don't have a specific hard deadline at, at this time. But I would like to see, you know, perhaps as we're talking in the fall and when a lot of these kind of building projects can be done, most reasonably given, given our weather, if, if there was an opportunity for us to be able to start building, you know, by the spring or by the early part of the summer, that would be ideal. But there's nothing that's pressing or I can't, I, I would not be able to provide you an argument to suggest anything other than convenience.
Okay, I just didn't know whether your two children wanted it up tomorrow.
Well, yeah, well, I think, I think, I think, I think they would. But I also know that fathers sometimes have to measure expectations, right?
Right, well, and, and I think that Allison Quinn explained to you that this would, if, if the town did want to sell the parcel, that it would have to go through town meeting, so.
Understood.
Yes, so there's, that must be scheduled, yes, Ms. Collins.
She was very clear about the process, and I appreciate.
Dr. Vias, I think the, the job of this board would be to decide whether we think it's in the best interest of the town, which, by my view, it would include the interests of the broader neighborhood in the town as a whole, really, as to whether there's any potential reason that retaining that property as it is would benefit the town and/or the neighborhood, whether it's a town department in terms of access to the, to the golf course, even though there are other access points, or for neighborhood purposes. So I think we need some public input into, I understand that you've talked with your immediate neighbor, and I think, you know, that it's good to have that immediate abutters perspective. The way the, I think it's the zoning laws define abutters, usually you go 300 feet. So there could be residents across the street or next to the other, next to your house, next to your immediate neighbor's house, who may have an interest. And we'd want to hear from them. We'd want to have an opportunity to hear from the entire neighborhood. So we had talked previously about a site walk. And I think by having this public discussion tonight, following on a previous discussion, we're giving public notice that you're proposing to buy the land from the town. So I know we're going to schedule a site walk. We had talked previously about doing that. I, I just wanted to clarify, as I understood what you were saying, the purpose for the garage is to house vehicles for your two children as well as storage. Was that correct?
Yes, that, that was, that's the primary reason for that.
Are there any other reasons for, for building the garage?
No, I mean, you know, I, we've, we've, you know, I think just, our garage is actually particularly small. So just kind of thinking about being able to store some seasonal equipment in, in there. That's like our own personal, you know, lawn mower and a snow blower and those types of things. My son has, let's say, has a fleeting interest in having, you know, potentially having a boat. So that would be kind of a place to, like a small boat to, to store. But other than that, it'd be purely just storage for, of personal property.
Okay, thank you. And this was the first I heard tonight that you might be interested in allowing some public use of the property. So, so that was interesting.
I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't address that in the letter. And I only highlighted that as a concern based on your conversation that took place on the 12th and I listened to the recording of. And I wanted to address that because that did sound like a concern of the board. And I thought it was a very legitimate concern, and I was, certainly would be supportive of that. And to address your previous comment, Katie, I, you know, I welcome the opportunity for my neighbors to, to, to be engaged in this conversation. I think it would be a terrific one. I certainly have no interest in doing this in the, in kind of any, in any surreptitious way. We've been, I, I, I hope you will hear from my neighbors, that we've been, you know, upstanding, responsible members of the line. responsible members of the Lyman Road community here, and and I wouldn't want to do anything to jeopardize that reputation.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to explain to you what our responsibility is in terms of considering the interest of the broad neighborhood, not just the immediate abutter to the path, but the wider neighborhood as a whole, and making sure that they all have an opportunity to come to the sidewalk, or any member has an opportunity to take part in the sidewalk and to give us their thoughts and opinions. So I just wanted to clarify that for you, Dr. Vias.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was some helpful information to provide tonight.
Are there any other questions? Are we able to schedule the sidewalk at this time?
Well, the only
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Dennehy?
Yeah, so I would also like to thank Mr. Vias for his testimony. I'm I'm a Rose Street neighbor and frequent user of the path. Thank you for allowing us to cut through, I appreciate it. Sometimes we we dabble onto your property, I'm sure, but yeah, so the the planning department has been working on this. Other folks at Town Hall, the chief appraiser has taken a look at this. The planning department has actually put in a butter list together. There's approximately 40 properties that fall within that perimeter that Vice Chair Conlin had talked about. So just jurisprudence, I think we should mail out those letters, letting them know when the sidewalk will take place. So we're probably going to need a couple of weeks to get those letters out, so I would advise maybe picking a day early October, you know, probably after Columbus Day for for a nice fall sidewalk.
All right, so the first Saturday after Columbus Day is the 17th. Does that, Dr. Vias, does that work for you?
Yes, I can make the 17th work.
Okay, and how about the everyone else?
It's not great for me, I've got some
The 24th?
It's fine with me.
Okay. Does that work?
It works for me.
It does for me, we obviously we need to check with Richard as well.
Right, well, we can double check with him, so let's tentatively say that's the date, and we can check with him.
Done.
That was my next question. Is eight or nine too early for people? Mike, you're Mike Zulus, you're you're muted, so I can't hear whatever comment you're making.
On a Saturday, maybe.
Yeah, me as well.
Wait, it's it's early?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just used to Conservation Commission. We were up and at them sometimes at seven. So is 10 better, or would we like to do the afternoon?
10 10 is fine, you know, with me, or early afternoon, you know, I'm thinking hot cider and, you know, and and donuts, but, you know.
I got the order, Mike, we'll have them ready.
Okay, well, let's say let's say 10 a.m., then, if that's amenable to people, okay.
Fine with me.
And I'll just make it to check with Richard.
I just emailed him, Madam Chair.
Oh, well, thank you. That's one last
10 a.m. on the 24th, see if he's available.
Well, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Vias, for coming, and 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 I agree, that was a really clarifying presentation that you gave, and
I appreciate the time of the board, and I appreciate their consideration. Thank you for your time.
Of course.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night. Okay, next item. Approval of meeting minutes from July 28th, August 5th, August 12th, and August 26th. Did everyone have a chance to look through them and make comments that they would like to make or edits?
I didn't have a chance to get my comments in, but I just have a couple of, you know, maybe one for each, one for each set, not 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 extensive.
It sounds like that that's something we could handle right here, if that's all right?
Absolutely, for my
Okay, okay, go ahead.
So on the on the on the 7:28 minute, it has all the appointments that we redid on the 5th. So I guess it's fine to do it to have it twice reflected in the minutes, but I thought I think we redid it on the 5th because we didn't think it was, I can't remember, we didn't think people could hear it on the on the on the 28th?
Right, right, the volume was
Yeah, so I guess it doesn't matter, just do it twice to have it twice reflected. It may be a little confusing someday for people, but
Well, point taken. I I wonder if it's better to make a, yes, Ms. Conlin?
Madam Chair, the edits that I asked Hillary to make today, which I don't think have been circulated to everyone, addressed that in the August 5th minutes, is an explanation as to why we were repeating it because of the telephone problem for viewers.
Right, I saw I saw that in the 8:5, but I do, would it be appropriate to add it in the 7:28 as well? For clarity?
I I actually don't think you need it. I think if it's in the fit in in the minutes of the 5th, I think it'll it should be fine because the problem will be if someone reads it serially and then they say, well, wait a minute, I just read that. So my view is it would be, and and thank you, Katie, I just identified a problem, and you went and came up with a solution.
When when people, you know, everyone should have the revised minutes or comments to the minutes, so I only sent them over this afternoon, so I'm sure Hillary didn't have a chance to, I know she made the changes, but hasn't had a chance to, I don't know, they could be in the folder.
Well, in in that case, perhaps actually, we should just, unless you want to go over your your changes, we'll we'll just wait till the next meeting to approve them?
I I just have two more kind of very basic changes.
Okay.
And and one is just on the on the on the minutes of the 26th, we have on the first page, it says, update Norfolk County Advisory Board Representative, and it says we defer this item to a future meeting, but then later in the minutes, I think we actually appointed Joe Riordan as, and I think it's the same.
Well, one was an update from him, and that was the
Oh, I see.
Right.
I misunderstood.
No, that's it, it's it's confusing, so, but but one one was just deferring his update.
I got it, I got it, okay, that's all I have.
All right. Would people like to hear an outline of the the rest of Katie's amended amendments to the minutes, or?
Candy, let me see if I can
No, that's not them. I actually
On the, I can go through the 27, the 26th, for the Equity and Justice Committee, I just thought we should take out those names, similar to what we did for the advisory board, but because we did not appoint that committee, just list the name. If we're not appointing people, I don't think their names should be in those minutes.
Okay.
Page four, there was just a missing apostrophe, we needed to delete the word doctor from the superintendent's name, and then I think the vote was four to zero rather than five to zero, since we didn't have a full quorum that night.
Right.
Those are just technical corrections, let me see if I can find the
Okay, it's it's about three down, your next email.
Yeah, I've just I've moved them to my own file folder here at the office, let's see. Okay, so for July 28th, we just needed to change remote via Zoom as the location to Senior Center Kelly Room. We had some missing words in the first appointment, after the word seconded, we needed to add the board voted five to zero to a point, and then the name of Dania Raphael. It was a technical question, we just had some members' initials on page three rather than the full names. On the August 5th minutes, we were just changing project will construct in on page two, the second item regarding the traffic signal, second line where it says project will construct, I asked if we could change that to project would comma if approved comma construct, since that project still needs to go through the traffic commission and then our board. And that's where, let's see, at the bottom of the page, prior to the appointments, I suggested stating, "The board revoted on committee appointments originally made at its July 28th meeting because of technical difficulties that prevented members of the public from hearing some or all of the July 28th meeting by telephone." So that was to address your point, Mike. August 12th, I just suggested indicating that the late Bernie Lynch was a former member of the planning board and a president of Milton Access TV, when we had the moment of silence for him. On page two, when we had the MCAC update, we needed to add that the board would schedule a public meeting in September to gather public input on the proposed flight paths, because it just was left a little bit hanging. And then for the next item, which was 167 Lyman Road that we just talked about, I asked that Hillary add, "The board discussed due diligence that would need to be performed in order to determine whether it wishes to seek town meetings approval to sell the parcel." At the top of page six
I actually have those changes, Katie, in the the draft that I read, I actually have those changes.
Okay, so then they've been circulated, they have all of the changes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. So I will entertain a motion to approve minutes from July 28th, August 5th, August 12th, and August 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor, Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Conlin, yes, excellent. So in confirming future meeting dates, our retreat is scheduled for the 12th. We do not yet have times, and would people prefer to meet in the morning or the afternoon, and what duration? Normally, we meet for for a retreat for about four hours or three hours. I I I think maybe if the first one was four hours and the second one was three, but I can't quite recall. Any feelings about timing on that?
Well, again, to the point about the just raised for a Saturday, I really can't do it before 10:00 because of some family
Okay, so would people like to move it to the afternoon? Would that be useful to people?
You want to say 1:00?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, okay, so let's say
Just to clarify, I could do it after 10:00 or after, if
Okay, well, I'm happy to meet at 10:00.
We do it in the afternoon as well.
Okay, but I'm I'm happy to meet at 10:00 or or to do it in the afternoon, but it it just depends upon how people want to structure their time.
Yeah, I may have soccer in the morning, so that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, so let's keep it at 1:00, that that's that we want to keep out of soccer time, unless, Arthur?
That avoids the meal factor as well.
Yes, yes, okay, excellent, so 1:00 P.M. Do we want to say 1:00 to 4:00 or 1:00 to 5:00? Thoughts?
I would be optimistic and say 1:00 to 4:00.
Okay, okay, good, we were just in the midst of booking. Excellent, well, thank you very much, everyone. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Conlin, yes, and Mr. Dennehy, and Ms. Waite, and Mr. Lynch, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, I hope you have a good evening.
Thanks.
Take care.